I'll call a meeting to order. First on the agenda, approval of minutes of December 6.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further? There's a couple of just incidental notes that I've got on it is I'll get to it.
Okay.
Nothing.
Great.
Material. Motion to approve the minutes of December 6. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Do we have to do a roll call?
No. That's when we go into executive session.
Oh, all right, okay.
No, all in favor? I presume.
Aye, yep.
So, roll move. Any more of the applications?
Um, no, the only form a business you have is for 75 Dale Street. Um, and I think I sent you a copy of the letter requesting an extension.
You did.
Um, from the engineer.
Do we, do we need to vote on that?
So if you want, someone will make a motion to, uh, on 75 Dale Street, uh, without me reading the letter, uh, the meeting, uh, to February 7th, 2022. This extension expires February 11th, 2022. By Grady Consultant Paul Backus. Someone make that motion.
Make that motion.
Seconded? Do we have it seconded?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All unanimous? The only Board of Appeals agenda, any comments?
I didn't find anything that jumped out.
It's interesting that the apartment house on Bedford Street has been withdrawn.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing on zoning?
No.
Okay. Vote to release the interest on surety held at Q Circle. You have the information, it's to, uh, reduce it, uh, it's, it's, it's just to give the interest. The interest is, uh, $781.10 to release the interest. Surety still stays there of 96,197.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made.
Quick side note, has he started to work up there yet?
No.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All unanimous?
Oh, sorry, town council's here, if this would be a good point.
Okay.
Do you guys, Joe?
I would ask for a vote to go into executive session, uh, under GLC 30A 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation known as attorney versus Town of Abington Planning Board at all, Massachusetts Land Court Civil Action Number 21, miscellaneous 00325. Votes may be taken. At the conclusion of, of this executive session, we will come back into regular session. Uh, I would like to ask each member to be recorded, uh, to go into this. Can we start? Jeff?
Yes.
Aye.
Bob?
Yes.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Yes.
Unanimous? And so we'll go into executive session and we'll reconvene at the end of the executive session. Uh, the people that are on will be able to listen, I'll be able to be on the waiting room and we'll get you back in as soon as we get through this executive session. Uh, we'll reconvene the meeting that we started earlier and, uh, went into executive session, we're out of executive session. Uh, the next thing on our agenda is a vote to affirm, Robbins Ave that runs in front of lot, at 89 Robbins Ave, as a street.
How do we do that?
All right, so, um, a long time ago, um, David Federico was before the board and he filed a plan to extend Robbins Ave. And, um, it went back and forth for a long time about the drainage management, draining the water, et cetera, et cetera, for the lot that he permitted with that road. He eventually, um, found a copy of the drainage management, so he was all set with that, but in the meantime, while he was putting the road in and building his lot, he purchased the lot next to it, which is a grandfathered lot. So that's on Robbins Ave as well, but it didn't have frontage on the street because the road was never accepted. That small chunk of the road was never accepted, that was built by somebody else and then David Federico. Like, so there's a, you come up and on Robbins Ave and there's like the chunk of the road that's not accepted. So, he asked the board to confirm that it was a street and then the lot would be buildable. And I sent you guys that documentation from a long time ago in a land far away, I thought. It was an opinion from Amy Questle and an email from Patrick at PMP from 2020.
Is, is this about 85 or the one that has like the little stub that goes down?
I, so is there a patch of woods next to that? The little, so the little stub that goes down, I, I think that's the house that was included when he submitted his subdivision approval, I mean, yeah, his roadway improvement plan. And then while he was working on that road, he bought that grandfathered lot next to it. So if you're looking at the stub, it would be the lot to the right.
So, the letter, I don't know if you have it or not, but, uh, uh, it, it's from Patrick, I thought I had replied to this before, maybe, I, I will look. But anyway, irrespective of the issue with the discharge from the detention basin, yes, the roadway improvements appear to meet the below requirements. According to the roadway improvement plans, Robbins Ave right of way is 50 foot wide. We've got a line paved width is approximately 18 foot, total paved width including the berms is approximately 20 foot. The road is paved, as shown on the current version of the as-built plan, does appear to be draining properly. I think that should do it. Would just refer to.
So I'm, I'm sorry Liz, I brought up a different image of the, from up above. 85 is the house right before the big, I guess, turnaround. There's a big, uh, oval up there, circle up there. And then there's either, it looks like a driveway that goes up off that.
That, I think, is the lot that was included with the roadway improvement plan.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
I think that's the lot that was included with the roadway improvement plan.
Okay.
And then while he was working on that, he has since passed away.
Right.
Which is why he's not here and his mother has asked to sort of, he's, she's trying to sort of wrap up the, um, the, the projects that were left sort of unfinished. Um, let me see if I can grab the as-built plan, hold on.
You may recall that we had a lot of problems up there and then, uh, on rights of way for the drainage and everything else with the people that are bonding them and that all gets cleared away eventually.
Yeah, I remember they, they updated the drainage appropriately, but then there's that, still that paved section that I can't tell if it's a driveway or if it's a continuation of the private way.
Or where it goes straight off the circle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, can you see that?
Yeah.
All right, so this, the land he bought, that is the, um, non-conforming grandfathered lot, sorry, is right here. Can you see it's to the, it's next to, um, Albert Ave?
Yeah.
Right, and so it's that little piece that says David Federico on it?
Yeah.
He bought that from Albi Corliss. So, it's, it's a grandfathered lot, so you can put a house on it, but he had to prove that, the building inspector denied his permit and said, you need to prove that it's a streak, because it wasn't a public way. So town council provided a definition of that, we sent her email to Patrick who concurred that it, it did, it was what it, it purports to do, it is a road, it is a street.
Okay. Yeah, because it, according to that, what you just showed us,
Yep.
That stub that comes off straight, it, it has a certain width for about, I don't know, 10, 15 feet, and then it narrows again. And then it keeps going straight, correct?
Yeah, so, um, do you see where the drainage adjustment is?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this, this over here is where the house he, he permitted with the improvement plan. And then I think this, this lot here is the one that we're talking about now, so that's just straight up on the road.
Okay.
The one you're thinking about, I think, goes back a little off the road, it stepped back a little.
Okay. Yeah, because, I mean, I, I haven't seen a pavement shape like that. I mean, I've only been on board seven years, so maybe it's more common, but I haven't seen a pavement shape like that ever, where it's kind of like a P. Uh, lowercase p.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, if, if, and that top of the nub of that P, I guess, is the minimum width, but nothing beyond that is considered a road, is it? Because you see how it narrows down after that?
Yeah. That's an 18-foot period road.
That's a what?
It's an 18-foot period road, according to this.
Okay.
Um, which might have been with the, I don't remember, goes back so far now.
Yeah.
With Cape Cod berms on either side. Yeah, that kind of looks like, and then there's a detention basin over on, well, the detention basin, see, so I think the house is over here somewhere. Right, or supposed to be.
Supposed to be, yeah.
He just, he never, he never finished that project.
So the lot line for this, the Federico property basically is the top of the roundabout there or the turnaround?
Yeah, so this, this was existing. This piece exists and the roadway in front of it exists, somebody else, um, built that.
And so the house next to it's 85, whatever.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the, the addresses are on here. Um, I thought this was, I thought that was 89, but I could be wrong.
Okay.
The one further over might be 89. We're trying to do this backwards.
It's 81, then 85, 88 across the street.
Yeah, so I, I thought this one was 89, or maybe this is 80, maybe the one next to that is going to be, um, maybe that's going to be 89 and this will be something else.
Either way, it's not built yet. It's not built yet, it's the bottom.
No, neither of them are built.
Okay.
Neither of them are built yet.
So we want to have a, have a motion to affirm that it was, uh, a street?
So by approving this, are we allowed, what are we allowing? Just that Federico property?
Uh, it'll be the two house lots, one that went with the, um, yeah, I mean, you're not improving the one that's already been approved, um, with the roadway improvement plan, which had the drainage and all of that, that's all said and done and approved and ready to go. Um, but literally the last holdup was he was going to have to redo the drainage and then he found the easement that the water could drain across the street. And, um, he died shortly after he found that easement. So that's why that house never got started, but in the meantime, he wanted to start on just that little sliver piece that, that, the underside slot.
I guess my, my thought is that that improvement hasn't been developed yet.
Correct.
So it needs to be developed before.
Well, the road's in.
It's in and done?
I mean, that's my concern, that doesn't look like it.
Send Patrick out there.
I, I haven't been, I haven't been out there, I'm sorry, I didn't make it out there, but I don't think it's been.
You don't think the final pavement's been on?
I'm not sure. It's my thought.
Well, they're all, what they're looking for from you guys tonight is to affirm that the road in front of that other lot is a street and he didn't build that other road.
Right, but it, it stops in the roundabout, the whole lot doesn't go across the roundabout unless that improvement was developed.
Right. Right.
But he has access to the cul-de-sac from his lot line, not necessarily the whole lot line.
I guess, is it a technicality that, that if it's not developed, is it, you know what I mean? That's, that's my question.
Yeah, I mean, wouldn't they, and wouldn't they have to take, finish the rest of the construction of the roadway?
That,
Yeah.
That's what I think.
People there, yeah.
Which is on him, that's his, both is his, well.
That part wasn't his, though. That part wasn't his. So there was that section of Robbins Ave.
Right, that was, that was first.
Did, I think.
Yep.
And that's what this lot is.
Right, but it does, but half, half of the frontage goes with that roadway improvement.
Right.
So it doesn't have, it only has a little bit of frontage on that part that we, we improved the first time for Redd and
Okay.
in the cul-de-sac, and then the Federico is extending it for that other house lot, and in the meantime, he bought this house lot and hasn't developed, hasn't improved the roadway, I don't think.
So.
But maybe he has, I haven't been out there, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, no.
I know, it's been a long time.
Yeah.
And then some of the.
March of 21, so a year ago.
And there, there is somebody that's trying to talk to us and says that road is only 12 foot wide.
Yeah, but he's, I don't know who he is, it's not Dave Johnson.
Oh, because he, it looks pretty wide.
The stub that comes off the top of that turnaround is undersized, that goes to that, that deeper property. They, they squared off the roundabout in front of 85, which I think is the Federico property.
Yep, they were supposed to do that.
What?
They were supposed to do that.
Which part, square it off?
Yeah, they were supposed to take out the roundabout so the road could move forward.
Yep, nope, that's, that's fine, they squared it off, but then it goes from, you know, 18 feet wide down to 12 feet wide to go out to that back property. And I don't know if that's what they were supposed to do. Um, so by approving this, are we only dealing with that lot on 85?
I, I would say the, the roadway improvement needs to be, that we accept it, needs to be complete and ought to form to build a house and a lot, but I. What's that?
Do you want me to see a pile dark? Maybe he has benefits.
Did, uh, that was Russ Wheatley that did the other plan, right?
Russ Wheatley did, yeah.
Stop, yeah, the road, the roadway improvement from the cul-de-sac and.
Yeah, Kyle's working for Dave on this.
Oh, he has?
Yeah. And I think he was set to talk to me, right? Explain it.
Whether it's built or not built, it's, it's, uh, land, the lot lines are set so that, you know, like when you're dividing a subdivision, that he's got enough room for frontage, but it's on an unfinished road, I mean, you can divide as many lots as you want along a thing. Uh, I, I, I think there would, there would be, the thing is that they'd have to accept the existing conditions if they, if they didn't put the money out to finish the road.
So, well, here's the thing, I get what they're saying, see this?
Yeah.
That turnaround easement affects a portion of that, right?
Yeah, it's just a tiny portion.
Area we're talking about. Um, so a portion of this road was already here, but now they've taken the turnabout out and as they moved forward, the road shrank.
I see.
So that's, that's what you're saying, right, Bob?
What's up?
That's what you're saying, right, is that?
Yeah.
For this, this grandfathered lot, that the, the road shrinks in front of it.
And the only part that's developed is the cul-de-sac, right?
Yeah.
They haven't, they haven't started the other road yet?
So he, I thought he had started, my, no, this part.
Google, the shot in Google shows that area, well, it looks like it's paved, but it's cleared out. All the property at the right inside is completely paved, is cleared and there's dirt all over it, and it looked like they were working the drainage or something and it's just abandoned.
I guess, my other comment would be usually, before we release lots on something like that, there's some sort of a bond to make, ensure the roadway extension is done.
We're not releasing the lot where, yes, yes, but I, I think he put up a bond for that other lot. For, for the roadway improvement plan, I, I'm pretty sure there's a bond and I, because I think I remember his sister telling me recently they paid to renew it.
Unfortunately, this thing has been dragged out for so long, everything is.
I know.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to actually have the applicant here at some point.
He's, he died.
The, who's doing it now?
It's his mother.
Then they need to come in and do this.
I mean, I can have her come in, they don't know anything about this.
But, we're just guessing too.
Well, I, I said we could bring, I could ask, um, Carl Garvey to come in.
Yeah, I, I think that would be on them, right?
Right, I can email the mother and say, the board has a lot of questions, can you, um, have Carl Garvey come and, I mean, she of course could come with the daughter too.
I think that's the way to go, I, I, I think we're just feeding this to death at this point, so why don't we do that, all right?
Do you want me to have Carl Garvey come in? And the mother?
Well, yeah, I mean, talk to the mother and have the mother bring Carl Garvey in, not us.
Okay.
She must know, she'd have to know that she'd be paying Mr. Garvey to, to do the work.
Okay.
Somehow or other they, and tell her what the problem is, that we really need frontage on a street and we haven't got frontage on a, on a completed street. In other words, who's going to complete the street? Who's going to pay for it?
All right, you, you want me to send Patrick out and ask him to do an updated list of what needs to be completed out there, so at least we know?
That, that should be on the applicant, you got money for that?
I think I do. If I don't, I will tell them that.
Wouldn't we have a list of, of all the things that the bond is holding, you know, the number of curbs and, you know, all the materials that go into it?
I, I can find the last list we have and we can use that if you want. I mean, anything that was, was done is deteriorating at this point, so.
Right, yeah.
You know what I mean, because there's nobody out there maintaining anything.
Yeah. I mean, I would like to also see whatever the road improvement plan was for that back lot, because I think that was before my time on the board.
Okay.
Sure was, yeah.
Hmm.
All right. We're all set with that, Liz, we can go.
All right, so you guys all want a copy of the approved roadway improvement plan and a copy of the last checklist that was done before, when he did the bond, right?
Yes.
There are people in the, uh, the room who want to speak if that's your preference, Mr. Chairman.
I would make, Liz, there's a couple of people that are sending in.
Yeah, I can. So I am going to unmute TJ.
Chat.
Hold on, maybe.
Hello?
No, I'm, are you TJ?
Oh, no, sorry, Gina Gaffney.
Okay, I'm going to mute you, Tina, sorry.
If I remember correctly, we were having these same exact questions the last time.
Yep.
Why can't I unmute him?
He's not muted on my display, Liz.
Yeah, I thought I had. TJ? TJ, did you want to speak?
I cannot unmute.
All right, so I am going to mute him and I'm going to go back to Tina, I believe. Gina Gaffney, sorry.
Hello, I would just like to make sure, I, I would like to be at the next meeting as I do oppose this. I'm, uh.
Can I have the address, please?
68 Robbins Ave.
The next meeting would be, uh, February 7th. Uh, whether that would be on the agenda or not, Liz would need to tell you.
Okay.
It will depend on if we can get the parties together. You understand the roadway improvement plan to that back lot was already approved, right?
That's wrong, that, that's not a, a roadway, whatever they built there is a driveway, the fire department can't even turn around there.
Okay, who, who insists?
I don't know.
This is Paul.
Okay, Paul, please wait until somebody acknowledges you, okay?
Well, you, I'm on, uh, Ms. Gaffney's, uh. Yeah.
So, Paul, what's your last name?
Walsh.
Okay, and you live at 68 Robbins Ave as well?
No, I live across the street.
What number is that, please?
81.
81, okay.
Go ahead, Paul.
So, a, a couple of neighbors have been talking about this, that roadway, the turnaround is supposed to be eliminated when the road is extended. And when we talked with the fire department, with the, the turnaround gone, the fire engine wouldn't be able to turn around on that street. You can't even drive a fire engine down that little driveway that's built there.
Well, obviously it would have to be improved and we, we haven't got a plan on that at this point.
Right, but it can't be approved if you already approve it. He's built that all the way to the ends of the wetlands on both sides.
We're, we're originally talking about the house, wh- wh- where the cul-de-sac is on that particular lot, but, uh, the rest of it, evidently there is a bond, I'm not sure what the bond is, it's been so long. I guess it's to complete the roadway, I don't, without looking at the plans, I can't tell what it was.
And, and again, the way that it's constructed, if you go down there, he built it all the way to the edge of the wetlands and then he put in a, um, like a guard rail made out of wood on the left-hand side, and then it just ends at a dead end, there's no turnaround for a fire truck to get down there.
Right.
If you go down Robbins Ave, the last house, I believe, is 85 and then this is the next house that goes after that. And then there's supposedly now, somebody talking about putting another house back there, so there'd be two houses. They don't even have the frontage on that little driveway. That driveway only goes back about 50 or 60 feet.
Right.
So how, how can you have frontage, I mean, does it go before the ZVA?
It's a lot in between.
Can't hear you.
What did you say, 85?
85, the.
Yeah, and then I think the new lot house number that the little stub goes to is 89, or this would be 89 and that would be 91, however the assesses, assign the numbers.
Okay, so this is, this is an existing house.
It's in a grandfathered lot between the existing house and the new lot.
Okay, but the, the non-conforming pre-existing lot would have to have frontage, correct?
Not if it's a grandfathered lot. You can double check that with the building department.
I, I believe if you talk to the building inspector, he refused the building permit there because it was not, it wasn't a conforming lot.
No, it was actually.
The, the lot, the lot is, is non-conforming, but he's, the building inspector was questioning the frontage.
Correct.
No, he was. And that, and that's what we're, we're talking about tonight.
Right, so it's been.
A public street not being accepted. That's what Marshall Adams denial states. Since Robbins Ave is not accepted by town meeting, public street before he can issue a building permit, the plan must, the planning board must determine the Robbins, that Robbins Ave is a street or a way, having in the opinion of the planning board, and it goes on to describe what you guys need to determine for that.
Right, and that.
The frontage, it's the road.
Right, but that portion of Robbins Ave is not a street. It doesn't conform to any of the requirements of a street within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I think that's what we did, what we established, and that is the reason we're having Mr. Garvey come in. And also at the same time, we'll find out what the bond is to complete the roadway according to the specifications.
Thank you.
And they continue to be a private way. The town isn't going to take it over if it is.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, are we all set with that? Is there anyone else who wants to speak on that?
Hold on, I get, I think TJ wants to speak. Okay, TJ, are you there? TJ, you're unmuted if you'd like to speak.
TJ, do you have yours, your mute button on yourself?
His microphone's not working.
Since we're continuing this, just have him email us or something.
Okay. Yeah, you can, you can email the office. The link is on the webpage. For the next meeting.
And this may be our agenda on, uh, February seventh, if we can, uh, get the parties together. Anything further to be said? Public hearing, uh, six-ten public hearing, two oh seven Bedford Street Plan Review Continued. And that, uh, there is a bit of request to withdraw the application we received. So we have a motion to, uh, accept the withdrawal of the public, of the two oh seven Bedford Street Play Plan Review.
Motion.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any further discussion?
Can you, uh, do they have a special permit before you guys do? I'm not sure.
Yeah, actually it says withdraw the proposal on a special permit.
I just want to make sure you accept to withdraw both of them.
This is, I'd like to, we would like to request withdrawal proposal on a special permit.
Okay, you can add site plan re, well, he didn't say it then?
He says, he just.
He just says a special permit.
That's all it says, a special permit in the letter.
Kind of improper way of
Asking.
Explaining about the whole thing, but I think I, yeah.
So perhaps, uh, Liz, that, uh, we will accept his, uh, proposal to withdraw this special permit and the site plan review. Uh, even though it was not mentioned in his letter of the site plan review, and if he could send us an additional letter saying that includes the site plan review. I'm sure it's just an oversight by him. So with that motion, with that being stated that way, we, we have a motion doing motion made and seconded, right?
Seconded.
Including the site plan as well as any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All unanimous. Six fifteen a while ago, a public hearing site plan review of seven fourteen Bedford Street, which is continuation.
Good evening, folks. My name is Scott Rolfe. I'm a senior project manager with OHI Engineering and I got to tell you, the last time I sat this still this long, I think I was waiting to go in the principal's office.
Same that long.
Probably the same thing. Um, I believe I was, I was before you folks on December thirteenth. I think that was the last meeting. Um, we had a, a series of comments that were, we received from Nolan Engineering that had been on the site December first, and they had written their comments on December first and submitted them to you folks. We were given a copy. Um, we presented at December thirteenth and, um, we agreed to, um, converse with Nolan Engineering to take care of the, uh, address the comments. So we, we talked to them directly. We asked them if it would be appropriate if we, if we spoke to them directly. They said it would be. Um, we don't like to, um, do that unless, uh, the peer review engineer is amenable to that. And we don't want to go over, you know, step on you folks. So we, we did, um, we were prepared a response to their comments, addressing their comments dated January fourth. And, um, we received a letter from, and you folks received the letter, we, we received a copy, um, dated January seventh. Pretty much stating that we had addressed the comments, um, that they had raised on December first. Um, satisfactorily, and there were some conditions of, or conditions, there were some comments they made toward the end. Stating that the board may consider approval of the plans as revised, subject to the following prior to receipt of a building permit. And one was compliance with the standard conditions of site plan approval. Two, submission of revised plans reflecting any substantial changes required by mass DOT permitting. Receipt of an order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission, as those may affect uh, final site plan design and soil testing that attention based to confirm the soil type used in the drainage calculations now. The Conservation Commission has in fact issued an order of conditions. Um, I asked, I'm going to get the name wrong, Tony Mokwin, is that correct? I asked her to email me a copy of the, the, uh, conditions. I have not received them. They, they, uh, um, they come out toward the end of last week. Uh, she is mailing us a, a hard copy of those conditions and, and will be happy to share them. I don't know what your preference would be. If, if you would like me to go through the January fourth, um, response, our, our response to those. Uh, the questions originally raised by Norwood to show how we've addressed those, or are you satisfied with the the letter from Norwood Engineering basically saying that we've complied with the, uh, addressed their comments?
I, I think, and we, we all have those, uh, in front of us, Scott. Uh, is, uh, is Dave on the call, uh?
He's not.
Yeah, okay. Well, everybody, does anybody on the board have the letter from, uh, Norwood Engineering?
Yes, the, the January seventh?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you have any questions? Board members?
I, I don't.
Is there anybody that, uh, that's on the call that has anything they would like to say about this other than the board?
Hold on, I'm just gonna. Mr. Howes, would you like to ask your questions?
Yes, I had talked to them after the meeting last time about a fencel on the back of my property. And the roof drainage issue, because I have a problem with being flooded by this property, because I'm lower than them. Now, I know they're correcting the drainage. But I'm concerned about the amount of roof that's draining over here that could be flowing in here, especially during the winter when the ground's frozen. And I was asking if they could correct it. And that's where I had left it.
Scott, could you, uh, answer that?
Well, I think, um, Mr. Howes, um, you had brought up a point that the existing stormwater system that's in place right now was in fact full of debris. And we had told you at, after the meeting that that, that those basins would be cleaned out. That stormwater system would be cleaned and freed, freed up so that the water could get to the basin as it was intended. Um, we also pointed out, there was a, a comment by Norwood Engineering about not detailing a, um, a recharge area to the, to the right of the existing building. Um, thinking that it was, it was something we were proposing. And in fact, it is a, it is a, an existing uh, recharge strip that runs, uh, parallel to your property. And, um, that we had made clear in the comments that was going to remain, uh, in place. But I think the problem you're probably having is, is more so effect, an effect of the uh, stormwater system being full of debris as, as it sits right now. It was full right up to the grates. So, um, I think that once that's cleaned out, there should be no ponding of water. It should all go right to the basin.
Now, when you look off my porch, I don't see any basin where all that asphalt runs towards my property. And I don't know if you're gonna be regrading it to redirect it or what. That's kind of.
No, that's a good question. Um, there is a basin. I, I don't know if you have a set of plans there, but for you folks to do sheet C six point one is a grading drainage and paving plan. And, um, I don't, sir, I don't know where your porch is. I've not been on your porch.
No, it's on the back. It's on the back and that's what I'm talking about.
If you went, if you went behind the existing building on this site into that paved area and headed, um, I guess we would be heading north, um, in the woods and it's, it's, it's thick woods there. It was when I was there anyway, the leaves were Ted, right? There is an existing stormwater basin in place. And it has an outlet control structure. It has, uh, um, it has some, some, uh, riprap. It has a, a settling basin. At the beginning of the, in the front of the basin with the, the pipes discharged to the basin. And when we had run the drainage calculations for the, the, uh, the amount of impervious we have on the site, we found that the, the basin that was constructed, gosh knows how long ago, um, was not adequate uh, under current stormwater regulations. So we had proposed modifications to it to contain the amount of water that would be, it, it would be necessary to, to handle. Um, and, and that sheet C six point one shows that the, the grading of the basin there and, and, and of course, all the vegetation in there has to come out. The, um, we did show a modification to the outlet control structure and we had put some riprap um, out before the I believe it's the fifty-foot, uh, offset to the BBW for the Conservation Commission. But the, um, the basin is designed to handle the flow of the water from the site. There should be no flooding on, on the park.
I understand you're talking, call it the retention area, the basin where the water's going.
Yep.
I'm talking along the back of the building where the asphalt is. It all drains down that hill and there's no basin. By just looking at the grade, that the water flows down the hill from that pocket lot up towards your left-hand side, around the back and down the side.
It points at your house.
Yeah, points at my house as it comes around the back of the building.
Yeah.
I'm, don't mind me, I'm looking at a half-size print, half-size.
No, I understand. Uh, I, I see it every day, so.
I don't, I don't know how to answer it. It, it's, um, we would have, we would have intercepted the amount of area from the impervious surfaces to handle the, and, and design that basin to handle that flow appropriately. Um, some of the site that the drains, some of the area of the site that drains offsite still would, would do that, but we're not contributing, we're not contributing impervious to it.
Well, actually you're adding a catch basin on that area too. It, it says add.
Yeah, we have a catch basin, C, CB two.
Yeah.
Um, where there, where there is not one right now, and that would be, um, the other one, the, the manhole that that ties into is, is a catch basin. Right now it's further away from, from what Mr. Howes is talking about, but um, that one's being converted to a manhole, but there is a new catch basin there to catch all the impervious surface for that parking lot. Uh, in that area, it's going to pick that up there, put it in the manhole and then take it out to the basin. Some of the site that runs off, I mean, we, we, we don't, we don't design sites to pick up um, all the surface runoff from the grass and whatnot to adjacent property lines. What we, we do is make sure that we're not contributing more water that goes there than what goes there in its existing condition. If that makes sense to you.
Makes sense to me. I'm just trying to get an issue as resolved as we can before it gets you know, to some stage where it's non-fixable, let me put it that way. I was just hoping maybe you could level that area as it comes towards me and catch the water and put it out back.
Well, the, the, um, I don't think we can level it, sir, because the, we're dealing with the existing floor elevation of, of the building that's there.
Well, see, it runs down the hill to that existing driveway you're taking out.
Right, and that, yeah, and all that driveway that was there is gone, so all that impervious surface will be gone. So there'll be less, there should be less water coming off the site than what does in the existing condition.
Well, see, what they did before is they put a dry well. I know we talked about this at the bottom. But that controlled it for maybe a couple of years, but once that clogged up, it just started flowing past that into my yard.
Quick question?
Yep.
Just looking at current conditions?
Big, okay.
It looks like, hmm. Where is kind of that continental divide line where the water runs either to the catch basin versus to Mr. Howes' property? Is that the dotted line that I'm seeing?
Are you on sheet, uh, you're on the existing condition plan, sir?
Yes. Yeah.
This is, the driveway comes down, there's, there's two parallel lines of pavement coming down the right-hand side of the building and then it flares out.
Yep.
And it goes around the back right-hand corner going toward the left.
Yep.
All that pavement, that whole driveway is coming out. He, there is, if, if you look at the contours, we come in from the curb cut up in Bedford Street, coming down that driveway. You'll see that, um, with, with the, the slope is coming down now that the survey that did this plan did not pick up the, um, stormwater, there's a recharge trench. You can see it on sheet C four point one, which is the next sheet after the existing addition plan. There's a long stone trench there that is designed to pick up that water. That would pick up the water that was sheet off that driveway. You know, to that point. Then it runs more, I, I've been on the site, then it runs more straight down toward the, uh, straight toward the back. It does go up, it does, it does have, there, there is a little pocket there of, of, of a low spot. Um, diagonally off the back right-hand corner of that building. Next to, to Mr. Howes' property.
It does look like what you've opposed, would slow any of the water down that got past that curb. Because, you know, you've got grading, you've got sidewalks to catch it, catch, uh.
A- a- and there is a, a significant reduction in the impervious surface that would contribute to that. So, so a lot of that water is gonna, gonna be gone, or, or at least it'll have the ability to, to, um, saturate the soil there where the lawn is installed rather than having the paved driveway.
So you're not saying that the proposed plan will reduce the water, but it won't make it worse?
I am saying it will reduce the, the runoff to his property.
Okay.
Um, just by. Um, just by virtue of of the 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 different characteristic of the the ground surface being lawn rather than, um.
Okay.
It's asphalt, yeah, I'll I'll admit, it's not great asphalt, it but it is impervious surface right now, it is broken and it's it's it it has uh grass patches within it, but um, once that's removed and the lawn is installed, it it should significantly reduce the amount of water coming down that hill.
Yeah.
It'll have the opportunity to saturate, soak into the ground where where it doesn't right now.
So there's a good question. Building that funnels it out towards that direction.
But I I'm sorry.
Downspouts that will funnel it off, any water off in that direction?
Actually, the roof drains, uh, one of the comments that that Noah had made was that we tie the roof drains into the stormwater system. So that um it didn't, it didn't contribute, and if you were to look on this is gonna be hard to see, but I can show you on probably the grading drainage plan, which I believe is C six one. If you look, the and right in front of the building, it says install six inch HDPE roof leader to CB one. Now, that's coming from the larger portion of the existing building that's not gonna be raised. And it's coming around the the proposed addition to the the front left of the building, and there's also a roof drain coming from the the um original large square, the large portion of the building behind the the addition. This is going to be put on on the left side, there comes behind that, and it goes straight into uh a twelve inch uh drain pipe there, and there's a note over to the left on the budding property to the left says install six inch HDP roof leader to twelve inch HDPE pipe now, so the the one comes out in front of that proposed addition to the catch basin, and one comes from that existing building out to um tie into the existing drain line there, and then that is all routed to the basin, so where the roof didn't contribute, uh did contribute to groundwater runoff previously, it will not in in the proposed condition.
And I'm sure part of the difficulty figuring out existing conditions is that the back uh drainage area has been blocked, so we're not sure how, under best conditions, how the current configuration would work.
It, well, it couldn't work the way it is right now, with the basin's full, it's full right up to the grate. But we do know from the, we we can calculate from the the, um. Well, I guess it, when we do our calculations, it doesn't matter if it works or not, we have to take the pre-existing uh conditions for the site, or the 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 existing conditions for the site rather, and we have to model it against the um, the proposed, the final grading. And that's that's how we, that's how we determine whether or not that basin has the capacity to take that flow. Um, we also check the, um, we can, we can run the calculations for the velocity and the sizing of the pipes uh to make sure that they're capable of handling the water to get it to the basin.
Mr. How, while we have you?
Yes.
Um, how many trees do you say is buffering between your facing your backyard and that paved area of the uh, of the property of seven fourteen?
I couldn't give you a count of trees, but it's mostly brush now that's keeping people out.
Okay.
When that building went in there originally, that was all gone, and people would just, they when nobody was there parking the lot, I wouldn't be around, I'd come home and find plows and plow frames missing.
Okay.
That's the only reason, I'm just asking for a fence to go along probably, just probably to the end of the paved area to keep people from you know, cutting through.
Mr. Howes, I'm sorry, I I can't speak to the fence, I know you, I know you spoke with the applicant at that hearing on December thirteenth, I I don't have any, any, I have not had any conversation with them regarding a fence.
Right.
So I.
I understand that.
The sheet L one point one, the landscape plan um, shows the area of trees between us and and Mr. How's property. And it shows a series of uh evergreens that would be planted between the existing building on our site and directly between that and Mr. How's house to to shield his house from the view of the the uh, um. What would be the renovated building.
I think the buildings are look better than what's there now.
Mr. Howes, I had a question, you said that there had been a a dry well there catching some of the pavement?
Down at the very bottom there, when that building was, or the addition, I'll call it, was put on. I had raised this issue, and the owner at the time says, we'll put a dry well in there, so they just put a dug a hole, filled it with stone, and that was it.
And the grading here, it doesn't look like there's any, it it doesn't look like it should have worked anyway, but there's no way to drain that back to the the new, the new places, it's only, there's only a six inch difference in height. Uh, to travel.
From where? I'm confused, you're confusing with a six inch difference.
If you were trying to connect that where that dry well is, bring it over to the new drainage. There's, there's not enough, uh, there's not enough pitch in the pipe to make it over there.
Oh, yes, I understand that. Um, you're talking from where the quality, the driveway they're removing is over to their basin. Could be a six inch difference.
Right.
But I'm talking, I know right now all the water comes down all that asphalt up top there, and there's gotta be a five foot difference. And it's all flowing down this side here, then there's like a dividing in there where it flows towards the back. But you had that side parking lot and everything around there coming around and down that side. Like I said, during the winter, we'd just come out here in the wintertime and I'd have water within five, six inches of my steps going into my basin.
And you know, that's one, that's that's one of the unfortunate things about stormwater design, you do not design frozen conditions, you 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 nothing. E- everything is frozen in the wintertime, when the, once the frost hits, nothing has any any recharge capability.
Right, no, I understand that part of it, I'm just.
But but the other thing is, but because of the grade of this, because of the the, um, um. Your, the existing grade of your property, as it sits adjacent to the back right hand corner of this building. The only way I could get rid of that depression is I have to, I'd have to fill, I'd have to fill up on you on your property as well to 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 make it go away, I cannot. I cannot eliminate that depression.
Yeah.
No, no, I understand the side depression, I'm talking about just going from the right hand side of your building straight back, you're eliminating the driveway towards me, the asphalt.
Right.
But it's still slopes, even when you cut it off there, is, I don't have a copy of the drainage plans here that I'm looking at or have. So where are you putting the new catch basin that you're talking about when I'm talking that?
On our sheet C six point one, which you can't see, um, we have, um, we have a walkway that that goes into the lower elevation of this building, and um, we have, we have obviously, we have existing pavement that 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 um exists behind the building, we are slightly modifying the grade of that pavement, we we're, we're putting a walkway in so that we have uh regular parking and handicap access to that lower level of the building. Um, that's, that's pretty much what drives the grades the way they are, that 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 doesn't allow us to cut, to cut that property down. Um, the um. We 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 just, we have a walk area that that has an island of brass uh within it, this is is going to catch water, but the the to the left of that al- almost, almost directly centered behind the building, um, in the corner of the pavement closest to the building, we have a a a new catch basin going in there, um, that will catch uh water coming down from the left side of the building off of Bedford Street coming down, we have catch basins uh two catch basins in that upper parking area, and then the water that comes down the driveway behind the building, which would normally head to your property will be captured by curbing and uh an exist, a a new catch basin there, that's that's probably somewhere in the vicinity of twenty feet off the back of the building. And that right there alone is going to re significantly reduce the amount of water that go went to your property, because the old catch basin where it was placed, while it it did catch some, it didn't catch anywhere near what this was going to catch.
You're gonna grade from the building towards the new catch basin?
I am grading, I'm grading, I I'm saying that the water coming down the existing driveway behind the building now.
Yep.
The majority of that water went by the catch basin that 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 is that is there now, which is, we're proposing to change to a manhole. A lot of that water went by and and contributed to the back of your property. By us putting in the curbing, the walkway, and and then putting in that new catch basin, we're going to intercept that flow and stop it from going. It cannot go past that curb and walk toward your property and and therefore be picked up in the new catch basin. And all that water that normally gets there now cannot get there in in the proposed condition. So that that alone is a significant reduction of water flow toward your, to toward.
I understand it now, yes, I didn't have a drainage plant, so I couldn't see what you're, what you're talking about. I knew there was a catch basin probably thirty, forty feet away from the building.
Yes.
The area between them is what slopes towards me.
And unfortunately, that was set far so back, the contours, water runs perpendicular to the contours, and you can see that there was approximately thirty feet of 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 straight contour there, where that water just continued to sheet come down that back driveway and sheet toward the the, toward your property.
Right.
Now, that's all gonna get picked up and it's not gonna be able to get there anymore.
No, that's, that's fine, that's that's what I'm looking for. I know there is a large roof area, but if you take what you're taking out in the roof area, will probably pretty much correct itself.
You might just be able to get a little squishy between your toes maybe now.
Yeah, but that's minor compared to having, you know, eight inches of water floating in your backyard coming toward your house.
Yes.
Okay, I'm all set, thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry, I I had a difficult time explaining it, but.
If I had a set of plans, I can read plans, I just don't have any, so.
Hi, Mr. How, and look at him if you want.
Okay.
Yep.
Get up there and take a look at him.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? And Dave could be with us tonight.
I haven't heard from him, so I don't know.
I think it's pretty obvious with his letter on on the seventh, if if, um. No one has any other questions, you probably could make a motion. To approve the project with the Norwood Engineering letter. Following that, go ahead.
I'd make that motion.
Motion made by Jeff.
Second.
Motion seconded, any further discussion? Uh, first, I'll I'll close the hearing. Uh, we have a motion for us to close the hearing.
Motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion on closing the hearing? All those in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
No, no one opposed, unanimous to close the hearing, so move. Uh, and then on the letter the motion that Jeff made, uh, uh approving the project with uh Norwood Engineering's letter of of January seventh. Uh, following what is in that letter, motion was made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Both, everybody in favor, uh, unanimous, and I guess that concludes that situation, thank you.
Thank you folks very much, I I've not had the opportunity to work in Abington before, I I hope we get the cross paths again, Mr. Howes, thank you for your comments. And I hope, I hope we've satisfied satisfactorily addressed your concerns.
I think you have.
Thank you. Thank you, folks.
The only thing, is the only thing left that I have here, uh, was the discussion of the state multi-family zoning requirement for town.
Did we release the interest on the Q server? Okay.
Well.
Yeah.
All right, so I will open the discussion on state multi-family zoning requirements for towns that have an META station.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to tell you in advance, um, I think I provided everybody with copies of um the most recent information that I had, and I believe I sent everybody, there's um a webinar Wednesday, I think.
Oh.
Um, that you can sign up to attend with the state explaining what this is all about. Um, and that's all I have, thank you.
Liz, can you send the link for that, please?
Yeah.
I know I said I would be on it, uh. A lot of it is explained that we will receive from Town Council.
Yeah, the materials we got were pretty, pretty explanatory.
Yeah, there's a lot of questions in it, uh, it's, they're looking, it could be a district or it could be an overlay. On the overlay, uh, it it could be in more than one spot, but they wanna have at least fifty acres. Uh, and there's some things like that, so I hope you've all had a chance to read it, read it all over.
I think we talked about this in the past, and we said that because there's a Todd there now, we could do an overlay district. For, but I mean, you know, that was just one suggestion.
You're such little land, that's near it, that's a, um.
I mean, I think the big question we need to find out, it's a couple of big questions, one big question is uh, do towns like us who have been proactive and already allowed this? Um, do we get credit for having done so? Um, or is this have to be all new uh units? So for instance, you know, we have the woodlands across the street, so that's a hundred and eighty units. Um, well, the Point Project behind the Senior Center is another hundred and ninety units. The forty B next to the train station is two hundred and forty units. There's that ten unit building that we just built across from, not we, but someone built across from the train station exit. There's the townhouses that have been built on Center Street, Center Ave. Do all those count towards that capacity? Because, you know, we said this is where we wanna have high density, multi-family housing, so otherwise, we'd be punished for being proactive and having this stuff built early. If now we have to build another thousand units on top of.
Yeah, the other question too, Rick, is, you know, it says there's a requirement in order to, for us to, you know, for us to do, to get the state aid, do we get? Do we know if Abington gets the state aid that, you know, is required, we would require to do this to get?
I kinda wondered that myself, I mean, have we ever gotten money from these particular funds, I mean?
Yeah, the only one, I think that we got a two hundred thousand for the uh water system was a Mass Works grant, but I'd be curious to find out the list of the entire list of what we wouldn't qualify for, because if it's a three hundred thousand dollar state grant every four years, then it doesn't, it's not cost worth it, you know, to have to then invest how much money in streets and water and sewer and everything else, we would lose money on the deal.
Yeah, I mean, if it doesn't seem like we're going to need the state state aid, and you know, yeah, as you said, Rick, you know, and we pointed this out, we've got the statistics from the uh housing production plan from nineteen, you know, and the housing units by type, it's fifty eight per point six percent single family, but we've also got uh, three or four units, eleven point seven percent, five to nine units, seven point one percent. Ten to nineteen, eighteen, eight, ten to nineteen units, eight percent, and twenty or more units, three point eight percent of the housing. So, uh, you know, we have multi-family units and and forty two point four percent of uh housing in this town, as opposed to fifty eight point six uh, single family, so we've been pretty proactive, but I guess the question, like I say, is do we need the state aid, do we need to, do we need to be in compliance with this to get the state aid? Do, do we, would we get that stated? That's another question that needs to come out.
The other thing, I I sort of, I don't know, I'm reading between the lines or not, it didn't want to include, but you had already for forty Ds, and and obviously, there's two projects that, well, two that have been approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals, one is existing, one isn't, it hasn't even started yet, which One is existing, one isn't, it hasn't even started yet, which doesn't count for uh forty D uh ten percent. Uh, and we have this new one that's going on uh, which is considerable.
Can I, you know, I bit through the chair. Uh, I put I. We I said this to Rick, but Middleborough had the same deal. You know, down by their train station. Um, there was a proposal to have a forty B by the train station. And uh. But they decided to uh. Go along with the spirit of the law with these new state regulations and it pretty much eliminated the the possibility of forty B. Because, you know, by right. Multi-units by right eliminates the the forty B thing. So I mean, an argument can be made that if we went along with this new state regulation. If there was another proposal to put a forty B in that district, it would go away because the multi-units are by right. I know that's the path that Middleborough chose. And you know, if you know, if you're familiar with the train station in Middleborough, they've got a lot of land down there. So uh. I mean, that's another consideration too.
Which steps all over the the whole T O D idea of mixing uh commercial and residential together. Because you know, there's going to be more developers coming in with all residential than they are going to come with a commercial. Yeah.
With the. Well, I think I think that the multi-family by right, I don't think you. Residential is a mix of residential and commercial is supposed to be in Todd yet, but. But this new multi-family by right for the zoning for the M B T A communities. Commercial really isn't a factor with this. It'd only be with the Todd.
Hmm. So I mean, two other questions I have is. They give some towns some wiggle room to locate it outside that half mile radius if there's a good reason. And what I'm wondering is if, you know, our Abington Center is zero point seven miles away and it makes a whole lot more smart growth. Planning sense. If we locate some of these units in Abington Center where. There's more of the infrastructure there and frankly, that's where we want. You know, some of those, some of these units, some of this type of development.
But is there a developable land jet uh, Rick, in Abington Center?
There's a lot of parking lots.
A lot of parking lots.
Single family, single story structures.
And it could be anywhere in town. If there's a bus that goes from that location to this location, other than that, it all has to be within a half mile.
Of the train station.
And and I would point out to the members that Stop and Shop and Target are within half a mile of the train station.
Yeah.
This doesn't have to be undeveloped land. It just needs to be land that could be developed again.
Yeah, but I mean, look at the Stop and Shop site. It's just that pad site next to the target.
Yep.
And uh, when those things were developed, we went through hell, you know, holy hell with that. You know, it's funny, most of the opposition came to that Stop and Shop and Target project from people in Rockland. It was interesting, I thought, because I was on the board then.
So I mean, there's, there there may be some options for how we handle this if we decide to do it at all, depending how the math works out, but.
Yeah. Well, I guess the thing we have to decide is, is it worth it for us to be involved in this as far as the state grants go to?
I mean, the first step I would have is is what feedback would we want to give the state? As, because these aren't final, these are just a guide, the preliminary. And they're collecting final comments, so.
Well, we're required to do that.
Yeah, so what what feedback can we give the state?
Well, one of the things we can give is, I'm sorry.
I'm just gonna hop in real quick, sorry, Bruce. Um, to let you know that the zoning board, I've asked them. Um, to kind of weigh in on this as well. And it's on their February agenda to get comments back to this board. And I think. There also needs to be at some point um, a meeting with the Board of Selectmen. And I'm not sure if that happens before we provide comments back. Or afterwards. Um. Yeah, it looks like after, it looks like we have to submit comments by March thirty first. And then go before the Board of Selectmen. On a draft compliance guide, no later than May second.
And and Bruce, you would need to to add that up. I I wouldn't have to be awful.
No, I understand that. I appreciate that. You know, it's interesting with the housing choice. We'll have to look into that because uh. You know, with the with that Abington Housing Trust that we've set up. Whether or not they'd want to use some of this housing. Choice funding. You have to talk to the Chair of that committee and stuff like that to get that information. And again, that's something we have to be aware of. You know, Rick, you said that we didn't, we we did a Mass Works grant. But as far as, and you know, also the local capital projects uh. You know, whether or not that could help fund the new fire station and stuff like that, so uh. We've got some questions that we need to ask.
Basically, town planner stuff.
Well, Miss Shay is the uh planning or.
Yeah.
Assistant.
Yeah. Yeah, the town's gonna be in trouble if you ever quit, you know. No one's gonna ever know anything.
Well, I just hope. That once we. This, this gives more encouragement to having a town planner. Okay. It does. No, no cautions against your skills, Miss Shay. But it really does encourage the town to have a town planner. That's just my point of view.
All right, is uh, I guess we. You know, this is something else you want to talk about on this thing. Is there anything further to come before the meeting?
Um, can I? Put this back on the agenda for March? Um, because we'll have feedback from the zoning board of appeals by then. And you guys can um have time. To get your thoughts in order for the comments that you want to submit back to the M B T A. You will have been able to go to the webinar if you choose to do that.
Is it worth having it on February, February, just in case it's something we want to talk about about it? And then if we don't, we can just skip it over.
I mean, we can put it on February and March, and if you don't want to discuss it in February, roll to March.
Hmm.
Um, because I, my. Probably you're gonna meet before the zoning board of appeals. That's usually how that gets scheduled, so um. We can put it on for both months. That's fine if you guys want to do that.
Okay, so there's three things I'm asking is that have we put on those agendas? Do we get the link for this? And Liz, could you do me a favor and send out the list of meetings for this for twenty twenty two, please, again?
And you want the link for the um. For the webinar?
Yes, please.
For Wednesday.
Right.
Okay. And then you want me to look into? Um. The Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Pro Projects Fund and the Mass Works Infrastructure Program.
Yeah.
See what monies we've received.
Yeah, and also talk to the town administrator and ask him. If the town would have any interest in pursuing any projects with those monies.
Okay.
I guess Rick sort of touched on the fact that, I mean, obviously you could put. Stop and shop in in the district. But obvious, I mean, I I suppose someday they might tear Stop and Shop down. I I. I think it's a value to the town, but I mean, that would mean that that could be made into multi-family housing.
The Stop and Shop, Stop and Shop on the first floor and three or four stories above it.
Oh, I never thought of that.
Oh, yeah. Well, that would cause people to start stroking out.
We got one proposal for stories.
I just remember those meetings. I just remember those people in Rockland and they were concerned about it. And it's funny, remember that story was that one twenty three there is a state road in Abington. But it's not a state road in Rockland. They were all concerned about the curb cuts. Remember that?
Yes, I do.
Oh, yes.
They had no problems on them right up against the town of Abington.
No, but when we wanted to have something to produce tax revenue in the town of Abington, they didn't like it at all. And then they didn't really have a dog in the fight because one twenty three isn't a state road in it. Not that I'm advocating dog fighting.
But it would be better, it'd be better put there than, you know, the woods off Summer Street. Oh, yeah.
Well, it'd be interesting to know how much land really is in the existing Todd district too.
I guess that's something else is who's gonna figure out all these calculations that we have to do, Liz.
Are you good with this? Are you good with a square?
Yeah, yeah.
Because we can't just say, you know, take a parcel and say this is twenty acres. It's how much of it is upland that they can actually build on.
Yeah.
They wouldn't let you improve what.
Well, that's another question to find out at this webinar too.
Target is all flat.
Well, I guess a motion to adjourn would be in order unless somebody has something else that they'd like to discuss.
Also do adjourn.
Was that seconded, Bruce?
Yes. The guy with the train engine in the background.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hopefully, we meet in person next month.
Fine. Thank you.
All right, guys.
Good night, everyone.